Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf Committee of the Whole Meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 20th, 2023. It's 6:30 PM. We did not have our Committee of the Whole yesterday, so we're having it this evening. We have two operational items to start off with. They are items 13 and 14 to appear on our regular council agenda. Which meeting starts at 7 o'clock today? This is for 5019 Hopewell Avenue. It's a site development plan and a final plat. And for that, we welcome our Community Development Director, Mr. Mark Hunt. Thank you, sir, for being here.
Thank you, Your Honor. If it pleases the council, I'll kind of do this in one fell swoop. One presentation will cover both cases as they are related.
Yes, please.
And I would ask Greg Beck to join in as he's worked closely on this rather complex case.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Appreciate your help.
So, two cases, 23028 and 23029. The 28 case is a final plat. And then, half of the site has a site development plan that we're bringing forward, which will be the location of Hope Church. So, Hopewell Farm Second Edition is the final plat. And then, the site development plan only for the Hope Church side, the west side of the lot. The applicants here are Ben E. Step and First Assembly of God/Hope Church. The plat is coming through E Step. He's the developer. His company is called C.T. Creek. They're going to have a second plat of Hopewell Farm. And then, Hope Church will be bringing a site development plan for this side of the property. As you remember, there are two different projects going on. We're going to plat the whole thing and then bring you a site plan for this as well, for just this side. A future site plan is forthcoming on the east side. Future land use, urban medium intensity, urban low intensity. That just tells us that the rezonings that you've already contemplated and are up for third reading today are in line with the allowed zonings in those districts. I will show you those zonings. A1, going to R3. Again, you have your third reading at tomorrow night's council meeting for that R3 designation that will cover the entire lot. So, both sides, both projects will be R3. That's what your final plat looks like. I will do a zoom in here in just a second. 29 lots of record total. One lot overall for the church, so the church is on Lot 1. That's where we'll have our site development plan here in just a little bit. Lots 2 through 29 are going to be individual lots for these townhomes. Lots 2 and 3 are for townhouses, but they'll be condoed out. We will have some right-of-way established at Butterfield. That's a continuation of the existing city road. Wildcat and Pulser Place. This is 52-foot right-of-way with our five-foot sidewalks, so our new standard. And we do have some larger buffer areas, as you may recall, and we show those on the plat. They will be more reflected in the site development plan, but they're shown here. And I'm going to give you a better graphic, but they're shown here at 30 feet, to the south at 25 feet. We have a 100-foot buffer here. That's at the applicant's request, not required by City Council, but they wanted to have that larger buffer there, so they left that. It was actually part of an existing plat. And then, you have your 35-foot buffer on this portion with a berm and a 50-foot buffer on this portion. I'm going to show you that in better detail in just a second. I think it's important to note that we have a bunch of outlots here. This is along, there's a drainage way. So, each of those residential lots that back up to that drainage way, they separate that backyard. And the portion that's in the drainage way, they make it a separate outlot and use it for drainage purposes. So, that's why you see kind of those little cells of lots running along this line. I think this graphic does a good job. It gives you a larger view, first of all. Does a good job of showing the area in question. A lot of buffer space. This isn't the only green space that's part of this project. There's interior green space as well, but these are the buffers that are built in into the plat. So, that means when you come to the site development plan, it's already on the map, so to speak. It's already law. So, you're seeing this larger 35-footer here. That was a big deal in our planning process. 25 feet here, 50 foot off the stream bank, so that's why this one undulates. 35 foot with a berm along the major thoroughfare, 50 foot with no berm, and 100 foot at the discretion of the applicant here on the corner. That covers the plat. I can go back and answer questions, but I might just roll right into the site development plan while that's fresh in your mind. I've turned this for you, so north is up. You have Middle Road would be here. Hopewell will be up here at the top of the screen. The church has one entry. It's off Hopewell, so no entry off of Middle Road. Plenty of parking in the church. Plenty of ADA parking as well. They do have some water quality and detention before it hits the regional drainage. So, they're going to retain some water. They're going to clean it naturally, retain it, and then slowly release it into the regional stormwater detention, which is to the southeast down in this neck of the woods. We do have a dumpster pad here for the church. They will have or retain the sidewalk that's already existing along Hopewell. We're going to bond for the sidewalk on Middle Road because that's not ready to be put in yet because we've got some widening of Middle Road that's to come in the future. So, that one won't come in yet. Remember, we've got a sidewalk, a large 10-foot trail on the west side of Middle Road, kind of off your screen here. But sidewalks are taken care of. Dumpsters are taken care of. Lots of parking and water quality. So, let's talk about the elevations. It will face, the church will face Middle Road, but it's going to be fairly set back. Again, you've got that 100-yard buffer plus whatever parking distance they have and then the elevation of the church. So, you know, this picture is kind of taken from, if you were standing in the parking lot, from the road, it would be even farther back than this, obviously. We worked them on their tree counts, and we're always happier to have higher caliper trees. They get mature a little faster. They take up a little more space. So, the way we got their tree count to meet our code is we had larger caliper size, especially on this area, which makes sense when you have that large setback. You plant a tiny little tree, it's diminutive. So, those larger calipers really fill out that space nicely. And then, they have the interior trees planted as well. Some interior service walks. Those, again, are not publicly maintained, but it's nice to have that connectivity so that people are walking, attending an event, something like that. They can just connect to our sidewalks and have an interior service walk. We're trying to make a little more focus on those. We like to see them. So, on the final plat, we have a positive staff report. We did have a unanimous recommendation for approval in May 17th through the Planning and Zoning Committee Commission meeting. We do require that any site plans that come forward, both the church and the future residential development, meet that concept plan that was provided at the zoning, rezoning stage. Everything is lining up. We've got the plats that show us those boundaries that we wanted to see on the setbacks. What the church is doing matches what we originally saw the church to do. We don't have a site development plan yet for the residential area, but everything's in place that it seems it will be the right shape and size, if you will. The next slide is going to be a repeat of this slide. So, again, same thing. Positive staff report recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission back on May 17th. And goes without saying, but the church site plan does materially match what we talked about at the rezoning phase. I'd be happy to go back and over any slides or answer any questions.
Questions? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. First comment is that connecting sidewalk from the church to our sidewalk.
Right here.
I appreciate that. I think they're doing the right thing. And I would hope that our rewrite of the comprehensive plan requires that in the future. I noticed that a lot of businesses and construction projects do not include that. They put a sidewalk around the building, but then you can't get from the building to the sidewalk on the street. So, I would hope that our comprehensive plan covers that. Second thing is, we're putting out trees on the bottom down there. Those trees will not be in the way of the new sidewalk that you're bonding for, will they?
Fair question. I think we'll have to kind of make that decision as we get closer and work with engineering to see how that expanded right-of-way might work. That's something we can look into and.
Yeah, because it doesn't make sense to put in.
Yeah, plant them and cut them down, right?
Plant them, come down. I agree.
Good point. Yep, we can work on that.
And then, my final comment is on lots 2 and 3. I know we do not have the site plan yet. We just have the plat, but I'm going to make a comment on it. Again, I think there are going to be a problem. Those units are three-bedroom units on a slab with only a single-car garage. And we count the garage as one of the parking spaces. And those units are side by side, so there's going to be no room between units for street parking. They're going to be close together. And the reality of a three-bedroom unit on slab is that garage is not going to be used as a garage. It's going to be used for storage. They're going to put the bicycles in there. They're going to put all of their boxes in there. So, that means they're going to be short one space for a car, assuming they only have two cars for that three-bedroom unit. So, I would, again, comment that I think our rewrite of the comprehensive plan should consider that for those units that are three- or four-bedroom on a slab, we don't count the garage as a parking space.
Yeah, I understand.
Thank you.
Other questions? Bill?
Is the detention pond on Lot 1 adequate to handle the impervious surface created?
I believe it is. I talked to City Engineer Brent Morlock today. Brian Fries has reviewed those calculations from talking with him. I don't have the details. I can provide those for you after this meeting, but I did talk to Brent about it. He felt positive. Mr. Schmidt wants to weigh in.
Just want to comment that there is a regional detention basin south of there. And this, that this development was obviously after that. It follows our old standards, so we actually incorporated a water quality volume to that component. So, Brian Fries reviewed those and believes that they're good to go for what they're proposing.
Okay. Has there been any thought in this maybe for Deckard and Chris going forward of people that are going to contribute to our regional detention, contribute some sort of monetary value?
I think we talked about if, in lieu of, if they were going to do it in lieu of, yes. But if they did the detention on their own site, then we would not consider them having to come to the regional site. But if they're saying, hey, we'd rather have it go in, then they would have to pay for that.
Okay.
But I think that's as far as that discussion went.
Correct.
And that is not the case on this site. This detention is adequate to handle the impervious surface.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Greg or Lisa?
No, sir.
All right. I'd like to entertain a motion that these remain on tonight's regular agenda as items 13 and 14.
So, moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Because we didn't really have to do that since they're already on there. Consent, though. We do have an item on consent, and for that, we welcome our Human Resources Director, Kathleen Richland. Jeff Rose from Gallagher Insurance. This is our workers' compensation, property, all kinds of stuff. Talk to us about our insurance renewal.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. Appreciate your time. With me to present the liabilities numbers this evening is Jeff Young with Arthur J. Gallagher, our broker for property insurance, workers' compensation. In front of you is the premium comparison for the property casualty and workers' compensation. And I'd like to address a couple areas on the spreadsheet for you. First, the numbers on the top of the sheet pertain solely to the City of Bettendorf, while the numbers at the bottom pertain to the Waterfront Convention Center. Those premiums on the bottom are paid by the aisles, and the total amount to be billed to the aisle for property general liability and excess $72,221. On the document, there are highlighted columns, 22-23 actual, 23-24 budget numbers, 23-24 renewal numbers, and that is where I'll focus this conversation today. As we discussed during budget time, the property market has been very challenging. Public entities continue to face rate increases. ICAP continues to experience significant increases in property claims. In general, the general liability shows a sampling of public sector clients receiving average increases between 9% and 20%. By being part of the Iowa community's assurance pool, the city experiences the activity within the pool and therefore would be affected by the activity within the pool. Staff has budgeted accordingly based on this information. To begin, you'll notice that the city's property, including contents, increased by 17% from last year, and this is mainly due to increased property values and rates. General and law enforcement liability increased by 14.37%. This larger increase is due to uncertainties around police reforms and staffing shortages, which continue to challenge law enforcement operations. Auto insurance increased by 12.46%, and this is due to the increase in the value and/or the cost of the vehicles. Public official liability increased by 7.57%, and excess showed a 10.72% increase. Again, based on the increases in property, general and law enforcement liability, and auto, excess will fall in line with those expenses. You'll notice that the distribution from ICAP did not occur again this year, and this continues to be due to the amount of claims processed for larger claims. The distribution numbers are based on total losses in the pool, and if there is a surplus in the pool, and based on the percentage Bettendorf has in the group. The credit can fluctuate year after year, and as you see, there was no distribution again this year. Therefore, the total ICAP package premium increased by 13.71%. The total package includes building and contents, general liability, law enforcement, auto, public officials liability, and excess. Employee dishonesty stayed flat, and flood insurance increased by approximately 15%. Going on to liquor liability and DRAM, the city received a decrease from last year based on the third-party handling Palmer Hills Golf Course Grille. Therefore, we show an approximate decrease of 85.7% by 27%. The city does maintain liquor liability insurance based on the liquor sales at the forge at Palmer Hills Golf Course. Regarding workers' compensation, the city is again experiencing a low workers' compensation claim and has a .77 mod factor. With this mod factor being so low, the city continues to experience additional discounts, approximately 41%. That includes longevity credit, loss experience credit, and large premium discount. The city also does experience a good experience bonus that also reduces the premium as well. With this mod decreasing slightly, discounts applied, state rates also slightly decreasing, and payroll being maintained, the city experienced a premium reduced from last year of approximately 4.10% or a savings of $21,693 from last year. And the payroll is maintained due to retirements that have occurred and employees starting usually at the beginning of the pay scale, which is normally lower. One other item to mention, that's kind of like a fun fact. The workers' compensation premium has been the lowest since 1516, where the premium was actually $451,531, where there was no deductible. So, we're kind of the next one that's the lowest after all those years. We still have a zero deductible in play at this time, and the first dollar of every workers' compensation claim is paid by IMWCA. I have to say, the Safety Committee continues to strengthen over the years and extensive representation from all departments. Stacy Griffin with IMWCA and Jeff Young. The city is in year number two with IMWCA Safety University and added training on various topics. Continued communication with Safety Mondays to all employees as a form of education and what the city's last workplace incident was. We have also provided safety training biannually now with Arthur J. Gallagher on about 30 items that staff is involved with. For example, electric safety, fall protection, ladder safety, et cetera, where approximately 50 people attend, and that includes Bettendorf, Davenport, Scott County, and Muscatine employees. I have to say, I commend the great work that the committee is doing, as well as the team working staff and the department heads that assisted in keeping workers' compensation claims low. The overall insurance renewal is set for $1,058,001 or 3.73 increase from last year's cost, yet the renewal is less than the 23-24 budgeted by approximately $61,971. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions? Jerry?
I have one question, Your Honor.
All right. Greg, why don't you go ahead? Go ahead.
It's kind of hard to see the screen. How much is the DRAM insurance?
1,100 bucks.
Approximately $1,100.
It dropped because of Palmer.
Correct.
Yes, I couldn't see it. Thank you, sir.
You bet.
Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. My question is, we've started a lease program for police vehicles.
Yes.
Are the leased vehicles covered by this policy or are they covered by the? They are, okay.
They are covered under this policy. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right. Do you have anything else you want for us tonight?
No, I just think it's great numbers.
I just see two, three, four, and five sitting at the bottom of the page here, hoping we're not clicking on each one of them. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Young. I think I butchered your name as you came up. I'm sorry, Jeff. I thank you, Kathleen.
Thank you.
I'd like to entertain a motion that this remain on tonight's agenda as consent J.
So, moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Fantastic. Any remaining consent agenda items, any particular council member would like to take up at this time? Jerry?
Thank you, Your Honor. Item F. I see that we've done agreement with Chive Hattery for stabilization project. Do we have approval from the private property owners for that stabilization project? And are we going to have to buy an easement or what's the story?
The story is that we have all the proper easements in that area, and the homeowners agreed for the work to be performed.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Anything else on consent that anybody would like to raise? All right, I'd like to, whoops. Bill's got one?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to make a comment. I'm happy to see that we have two contracts with consulting engineers. Both of them are under six figures. That doesn't happen very often.
All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve all remaining consent agenda items for our consideration this evening.
So, moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you both very much. Thanks again, Jeff, for being here. Have a great rest your evening. You can certainly stick around for the rest of our meeting. I have one item to be added, but I'll go with council first. Is there anything to be added to tonight's agenda by council? All right, at this time, I would like to invite Angie Sharp to come up. We had a little milestone today we'd like to celebrate with you all.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. I'm going to put Denise on the spot here for a minute, and this is going to also embarrass her.
You can put the camera on the speaker and come out if you'd like, Denise, now that we have you cubbyholed.
I don't think she would like that, sir, but if you could put our presentation computer up, please. I am so excited to announce a major milestone for our city. Today, we had 10,000 followers on our Facebook page, which is way ahead of other communities in our area of our size. So, as you can see, we celebrated a little bit today with the keeper of our page, Ms. Denise Enfield. Denise is behind the scenes as she normally is, working the cameras in the livestream tonight, but I know she agrees with me that this is a team effort. It's a milestone win for the entire city. So, takes a team, not just mine, but all of you on the council, all of our staff, whether it's mayor's messages or.
I think Kyle wants to take credit for this, too. We always give Kyle the gold star and all of the fire post. I'm telling you.
I know, yeah. Kyle's always winning the number-one foam finger on the fire department's page, but certainly for the city page, this is a great milestone as well. So, I want to just thank members of council and also our staff for always being open and innovative and responsive to all of our sometimes crazy ideas for social media, whether it's about basketball budget or sharing photos of our public works crews out in the field. It really, really does make a difference, and it proves it today. So, I also just want to say to Denise, you are an outstanding employee, hardworking, innovative, and an all-star, and this milestone is definitely because of the work that you've put in over the last couple of years.
Great job, Angie.
Fire department. So, you're back down in.
Well, we'll fix that.
We think the fire department should keep the foam finger, Your Honor.
Well, they certainly think they should. We're all working to catch them. All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved.
We stand adjourned. Let's take four. We'll start. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, June 20th, 2023, at 7 o'clock PM. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Brown?
We see you, Lisa. Can you hear us?
Oh, yeah, here.
Connors?
Here.
Nauman?
Here.
Sexer?
Here.
Baden?
Here.
Palzinski?
Here.
Thank you all for being here. Now, if you could all please rise, remove any caps or headdresses you may have, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be followed by an invocation. Please remain standing for that invocation given by Bettendorf Police Chaplain and Reverend of Our Lady of Lourdes Catholic Church, Father Jason Crossen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father?
Heavenly Father, we ask your blessing upon our city, its leaders, its residents, and its workers, especially in this time of summer heat. Keep them protected. We ask for gentle rains for our crops, to help our farmers, and to give us the food that sustains us that we need. We ask that you bless all of us, those here and those who are on vacation in the summer season. Keep us safe and protected and help us to continue to make good decisions as a city of Bettendorf. And we ask all this in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father. Pleasure to see you as always. Okay, we move to public requests of council. If you are here and want to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda for a public hearing, which would be anything, because we have no public hearings this evening, you may be heard by approaching the podium in the back. Please state your name and your address. We'd like to hear from you. Anyone here for public requests of council? All right, let's close public requests. Let's move to a slew. Eight third readings. We start with you, Councilmember Nauman.
Thank you, Your Honor. In case number 23-013, I have the third and final reading of an ordinance approving the future land use amendment for property generally located at the southwest corner of Devil's Glen Road and Forest Grove Drive, open space and parks to UMI urban medium intensity. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Second.
Any discussion here? Third and final reading? This is the third time you've heard it here. You had a presentation at Committee of the Whole. We've talked about it a number of times. Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
All right, that ordinance has unanimously passed on all three readings. We move to the second one. Councilmember Palzinski, please a third and final reading.
Thank you, Your Honor. In case number 23-021, I have the third and final reading of an ordinance approving the future land use amendment for property generally located at the southwest corner of Devil's Glen Road and Forest Grove Drive, open space and parks to ULI urban low intensity. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Second.
Any discussion here? Michelle, please call the roll.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Now, batting the third baseman, Councilmember Baden. Now batting the third baseman, Councilmember Baden.
Thank you, Your Honor. In case number twenty-three dash oh one four, I have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf Iowa zone map for property generally located at the southwest corner of Devil's Glen Road and Forest Grove Drive, C one neighborhood commercial district to C two community commercial district. I move approval of the ordinance at the final reading.
Second.
Any discussion here? Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
That also unanimously passes. Let's move to Councilmember Nauman for another third reading.
Thank you, Your Honor. In case number twenty-three dash zero one seven, I have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf Iowa zone map for property generally located at the southwest corner of Devil's Glen Road and Forest Grove Drive, C one neighborhood commercial district to R one, single family residence district. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Second.
Discussion on this item. Hearing none, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
All right, back to you, Councilmember Baden.
Thank you, Your Honor. In case number twenty-three dash oh twenty-two, I have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf Iowa zone map for property generally located at the southwest corner of Devil's Glen Road and Forest Grove Drive, C one neighborhood commercial district to C two community commercial district. I move approval of the ordinance at the final reading.
Second.
Any discussion here? Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Another unanimous approval on third and final reading. So we move to Councilmember Sexer, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. In case number twenty-three dash zero two three, I have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf Iowa zone map for property generally located at the southwest corner of Devil's Glen Road and Forest Grove Drive, C one neighborhood commercial district to R three mixed residential district. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Second.
Any discussion here? Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Unanimous approval. Let's move to Councilmember Palzinski again.
Thank you, Your Honor. In case number twenty-three dash zero two four, I have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf Iowa zone map for property generally located at south, at the southwest corner of Devil's Glen Road and Forest Grove Drive, R one, single family residential district to C one neighborhood commercial district. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Second.
Discussion on this item. Okay, Michelle, let's call the roll.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
That also has unanimously passed. We move to fifty nineteen Hopewell, where Councilmember Connors will shoot two.
Thank you, Your Honor. In case number twenty-three dash zero one eight, I have the third and final reading of an ordinance amending the Bettendorf Iowa zone map for fifty nineteen Hopewell Avenue, Lot one, Hopewell Farms First Edition, A one agricultural urban reserve district to R three mixed residential district. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Second.
Any discussion on this first item?
Your Honor?
Yeah.
Due to my employer giving the potential appearance for a conflict, I'll recuse myself of these next few items.
Thirteen and fourteen.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion on these items? Michelle, please call the roll.
Nauman?
Recuse.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Well, Councilmember Connors, your first shot was good. Shoot again.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving a site development plan for fifty nineteen Hopewell Avenue. I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion on our site development plan for the church we saw tonight? Okay, Michelle, hearing none, please call the roll.
Nauman?
Recuse.
Sexer?
Aye.
Baden?
Aye.
Palzinski?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
We move to Councilmember Sexer to clean it up for the evening.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution approving the final plat of Hopewell Farm Second Edition, a repli of Hopewell Farm First Edition. I move approval of the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion here on the Hopewell Farm Second? Final plat? Going once. Okay, Michelle, please call the roll.
Nauman?
Recuse.